July 15th to order at 7:30. And I invite everyone to join me to give pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The operating cash on hand for the mayor and council for unrestricted use is $331,573.32. And remaining restricted use funds is $21,054.52.
We're going to approve the minutes?
Yeah. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 1st?
I wasn't here, so somebody else.
I second it.
Okay. Do I hear?
And I second it.
Yes.
Everybody agree? Okay, sorry I skipped over that. How about the payment of the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I second it.
Aye. Okay, now we have Main Street, the A&amp;E District, and meter bags.
Yes. This is not final final, but it's pretty final. So Main Street had been talking about how to make it a little bit easier and more positive to effect the parking bans for special events. We kind of always thought we were burdening the police department, they have to do these hand lettered signs and tape them on everything, parking meter and staple trees, do whatever they can to get the work out. So we realized there's probably a way to make this a little easier. We also thought there was a way to take a negative and turn it into more of a marketing positive. In other words, not just say, "Don't park here," but say, "You can't park here because there's a fabulous thing coming, there's a great event coming." And the same with the farmers market ones that are circling the park at this point. It's a chance to advertise the fact that we have an award-winning farmers market every Saturday morning. So my volunteer designer, Barbara Swelcom, worked with us on the, and we got a grant from the Maryland State Arts Council to cover the cost. We sort of put together a proposal, this is what we can get for the cost, here's a, you know, a design. And so we got the grant and we're thrilled with that. And it'll pay for almost, well, it'll pay for all of them depending on how many we order. We may have to, when we get into nitty-gritty with the companies, not order one for every single meter because I think Tea Party is probably the only event where we would need every single meter to have a sign on it. But we count the meters, you know, Park Row, Memorial Plaza, all the meters. And the grant should cover almost all of that. So if anything additional we can pay for out of the meter money that goes to beautifying downtown. So for the police to make it easier for them, the idea is what you're looking at, the little gray window area, is going to be a clear plastic window so that the police can just slide a sheet in it. So they can fill it out, you know, Xerox it and just slip it in each bag and then slip the bag over the meters for whatever blocks we're trying to close for that particular event.
So this is on canvas or something?
On canvas, yep. It's canvas. I regret, I had a miscommunication with Barbara who has more of the information on this and she can come back to another meeting if you want her to, if she gets a sample. We're waiting for a sample from the company that will show us, you know, what the stitched plastic would look like on this bag. Because I want the police department to test it. You know, we've been working with Steve Lazar and the chief's been aware of this, but before we place the order, we'll sit down with them again and just say, "Does this work for you guys?" So I think that's...
They look great.
The grant was $2,430 something dollars.
I think they handed this one out by Mr. Taddy.
Ah, thank you, thank you. At least I didn't have it on the kitchen counter. Yeah, it's $2,464 from the Maryland State Arts Council.
Is this purple?
It's going to be kind of a deep blue. That's just the Xerox machine, but it's really a sort of a deep, oil purply blue.
These look black, but the others look...
Barbara Swelcom now. Anyway, if you have any questions for Barbara, I can call her right back. But she did a great job designing it. This has been a couple of iterations to get where we are now.
Are you going to leave the farmers market bags on permanently or just put them...
Well, the plan is to do, just to do what everybody's doing now, I think only because there's no labor to put them up every week. So they, the idea was that they would stay up.
Up permanently?
Yeah.
I'll just tell you, are they going to be canvas? They're going to, on the weather and...
Well, we did price vinyl and we were thinking of maybe ordering those in the vinyl, which would not fade as much if indeed they're going to stay up every day of the year.
It kind of really doesn't matter, you know, taking care of them. I used to come down and put them on Friday nights. The canvas or the plastic, they both wear out from the weather.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a plastic, but this company that we've dealt with has canvas and vinyl.
Vinyl and canvas, because the ones that you put on the Park Row side, people lean on them and I bought big safety pins to attach them and...
Yeah, I know they get in bad shape quickly.
And, yeah, it's the weather.
They serve this well, but usually after you do the prototypes with the company, the next ones you order are cheaper.
That's true. We can see how they last and if they get too faded.
You deal with the same company. Later on, you can get more.
Yeah, that's true because there's that setup fee you have to pay in the beginning too.
It's big.
It'll be like a hundred dollars per zone.
So, and that's going to be that many less meters that people would donate.
Well, those are covered all the time anyway.
Okay.
So we're already not getting any beautification revenue from those.
Okay.
You know, and it would just be, I can talk to Bill later, but is there another way to not have them up all the time? But it just seems like somebody then has to be responsible.
No, it works well.
Just to leave them up. And then, and again, then you're marketing the fact that there's farmers market.
Sure is.
Right.
Some of the fabric that's used for boat covers actually holds up pretty well on all kinds of weather.
Yeah, I don't know if this is a Sunbro, but this company, I'm sure uses, the canvas, I'm sure has, you know, some kind of shelf life for being hung wars because that's all they make.
Oh, I think that's nice.
Looks great.
If nothing's going on, you have these, you just leave these on there blank?
No, Marty, they only go on when there's an event. So just what, the way the police now post those signs on the meters, they'll just, at the station, slip the things in and then put them on. So they'll only be there for like the day before the event.
The only thing they'll have to do is take them off, pick them out again at the end.
Do you want to talk about fall cars on high?
Yes, yes, I can do that too. We don't have the permit because I didn't have, I didn't, I was chomping away, I didn't get it to Jen in time. But I can go ahead and tell you the broad brush of it so that if you have any input, it'll go into the permit. And I think that John Swelcom has brought this up before, at the beginning of the cars on high season. So I think this is not all new to you. But the idea is to have a real car show on Saturday, September 14th. It would be after the farmers market. We would start setting up at 1:00. It would be 300 block of High Street where Cars on High usually is. Then we would fill Park Row and Memorial Plaza next to the church, provided there's not an event or funeral there. And we would have at least one food truck, maybe two, some food carts, beer and wine sales, to make it more of a real car show. And what I think John taught you all about before, he wants to feature some cars in Fountain Park itself. So he would put four to six special cars in Fountain Park and then the others would be lined up along the streets, very similar to what they were for the regular cars on high.
I think you said that the ones would be in Fountain Park would be on some sort of a mat sort of, did you?
I don't remember him mentioning a mat, but we would work with the town to minimize the impact on the car.
Are they coming gratis?
I think what happens, and this is why we'll have to come back to the permit when John's here, I just get better information on whether it was on the agenda tonight. I think the idea is that you pay a fee to bring your car to the car show and then we award prizes in different categories. So they actually pay to be part of the car show and then they're, they can win prizes for various categories of cars.
But the town doesn't put it?
Not costing us anything, right?
Nope.
I'm all in favor of that.
I just want to bring in an email that went around. If their event is going to start at 1:00 and is their setup time going to be at 1:00?
Yeah.
Because the park is going to have to be emptied if they're going to bring cars in the park. And so then that would shorten the time of the farmers market.
Yeah, what I'm now thinking and... I have copies of handwritten notes about the permit that I'll be fine tuning and giving to Jen to work up the actual permit. We're thinking the car show itself is going to have to start at 2:00, like 2:00 to 6:00, so that we can start setting up at 1:00.
Okay.
Now, if, you know, if Park Row clears or High Street clears and we can start setting up earlier, we will, but we'll let people know that they can't. Hey, Barbara Swelcom's here!
Sorry!
It's not, it's my fault. No, it's my fault. So I've already presented your meter bags. If you have any question for the artist, Barbara Swelcom.
They look great.
And we're just talking about Park Row, actually. We don't have, we're not getting the permit signed tonight, but I was just, any questions? Because Barbara really does, she and her husband organize the Cars on High and the car show. So they'll be able to answer more of your specific questions about the cars. And what was the question somebody just asked?
Well, if the event starts at 1:00...
Setup starts at 1:00.
Okay, then we have to notify everybody at the farmers and artisan market that they have to be out before 1:00 because you're going to have to have the park cleared.
And I spoke by there this past Saturday and about 21:00, it was almost empty. So they were very prompt when they finished, they finished, they cleaned up.
And we did correspond with Sabine about it. We just kind of asked her judgment, you know? And she recommended that we don't start until closer to 2:00.
Setup at 1:00, yeah. Okay.
And as far as pulling the cars up on the grass, if they pull them up slow like I'm sure they want to, those types of cars anyway, and know where the irrigation is, it shouldn't be any worse than having people trample it down. We are, I do have a project going with the garden club this fall, after that date, not long after that date, to punch out the park. And aerate it and reseed, overseed it and all that. I think mid-October, a few more.
Okay.
And that's a local guy that wants to do it and the bid that I have is for like $5,400. I'm working with the garden club about if there's any cooperation that we can do together annually, annually to keep it. That's a little better.
And I thought that cars, they could be part of the car show and then they can win prizes.
Yes, and we're going to try to fundraise a little bit. So it's a work in progress and hopefully we can raise some funds for the town.
It sounds great.
Any other questions about meter bags or car show?
Thank you.
Don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Touch a Truck is this Thursday. We're hoping it won't lightning and thunder because we're going to go ahead, go ahead with it unless it's undangueed or not.
And what is it, what are the times?
It's 6 to 8.
Same time as Cars on High.
Yeah, and the touch a truck aspect of the event will be on Park Row.
In the shade.
Okay.
Actually, it should be chief now. The police report?
Yes.
That should be, it's not on.
It's the updated one. I put updated ones on everybody's line.
You have the same agenda we do?
No.
Actually, I started right here.
She had her older agenda with notes on her.
This is the hidden agenda.
Oh, now I see it.
I love chief, but I did this for myself.
Good evening, acting mayor and council. Just following up on the, on the bags. The one very practical problem is we put paper signs presently on the meter. So it's not uncommon at all that we put them out the day before in the rain and the wind and whatever comes along and if not blows them away, at least makes them unreadable so that we have to do it again. So we absolutely welcome the bag. I think it's a great idea. And we're happy to serve the town, however, putting paper bags or whatever, but I think it's a really good, good idea.
Well, while we're on that though, if the slit is on the top and it rains, sideways, great things.
That's a great idea. So anyway, please allow me to present the review, the statistics for June 2019. Police Department had 58 hours of administration, that was 4% of our time. We did 22 hours in criminal investigations with 1%. Accident investigations, five hours at 1:00. We did 659 hours of vehicle patrol at 44% of our time. Our foot patrol was 173, that was 11%. Our training was 62 at 4:00. Court was 14 hours at 1%. We had 158 hours of every time, that was 10%. We made 19 adult arrests and that involved 49 separate charges, broken down by the most frequent. We had 14 harassment, 10 assault, five each for telephone misuse and theft. We had four CDS violations, two each for a deadly and dangerous weapon. I'm sorry, it's just two. And then we had one each for bad checks, failure to obey FOA, FTA, reckless endangerment, resisting arrest, stalking, trespassing, and roving vagabond. There was one juvenile arrest and that was a runaway charge. We had four Part 1 offenses. We cleared one by arrest, one by exception. We had two, I'm sorry, we had 18 Part 2 offenses. We cleared 13 by arrest and we had two by exception. We issued six motor vehicle citations, 196 warnings, and we had 317 red speed violations. Our overtime hours broken down, 12 for court, 17 for task force, 76 for shift coverage, two for training, and we had 51 on extended investigations. And in our calls for service, Ward 1 had 3.5%, Ward 3 had 33%, Ward 4 had 21, and we had 6% outside of jurisdiction. Charting our busiest activity through the days of the week, it was Saturday pretty convincingly. And then our busiest times, we actually had like a three-way tie. And that was 10 to 11:00, 2:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, and 8:00 to 9:00 in the morning. So if we see that whole chart all green, then we better leave because that's, that's really busy. But there's, there's three busy times and again, these are sometimes anomalies that really can't tell you why it goes that way. But that's the statistics for the one.
Chief, have we heard anything about our settlement on the purloined officer?
Yes, sir. I have a personal check, and again, that fee is about $5,000. A personal check for the majority of that, 41 or something like that. I expect a check Wednesday from the town. They are going to reimburse us for the actual polygraph and that kind of stuff. So I'll have a private...
And how about the other officer? Didn't we have sent two through and lost one?
I thought that's what you're talking about, the one that, I thought you were talking about the...
Not the one that was taken from us, but the one that, we still have one left.
Oh, correct. How's he doing?
Yes.
When you said purloined, we all thought that it was taken from us.
I really was talking about, did we get the money for the purloined officer? But now I'm asking a different question. How are we doing with the one we kept?
Yes, sir. My apologies for misunderstanding. Yeah, he's doing great. So he's in field training. He will complete that in early August. He has a number of set tasks to complete from the police training commission. He's well on his way through that and it looks like he's going to be a great officer. And I will bring him in when the mayor's here next meeting or whatever and introduce him to you.
And one last question, it was going to be part of my report. Did we get notice of these DP and L outages that are planned? The great picture of you out there. But I have this question, not from us, but from other people, like did you know, did they all know about this planned outage?
I did not know about this.
Okay. Well, I really want to look into that for the council because sometimes they are planned, but it's not like the state highway puts out a big board and everybody drives by and knows when the bridge is going to be closed. It's sort of clandestine.
We were not aware. It would have been helpful.
But it really hurts businesses, it hurts our ability to work here because our phones are electric really.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sorry I skipped over that. Okay, how about the town manager's report?
Well, I really don't have anything to report tonight, but I'm...
Kind of wait, after the permit for the cars?
That will be coming, I think they gave a really nice explanation twice now of what's going to occur and now they're just filling in the details.
Yeah, I'll get the information, Jen.
I don't think you'll have to come back, but I guess the biggest rainstorm of the year will be on September 13th. Okay? Yeah, so that's the only thing I was going to bring up, but I think that's probably enough to talk about. I'm going to try to say a second record. The, I just don't know whether this is coming up on ward reports or not, but we did get a lot of flack for not having 4th of July fireworks. And one went overboard, one complaint went totally overboard and I turned that over to the police. But I do think that you, you want to consider, if, if everybody out there who's angry wants to donate, this is a good time. I think we could put up an unbelievable show at, at the space that we have, in a small space albeit, at the, at the front of the park for 7,500 pugs. And if all those people out there that were so disappointed, wringing their hands, wanted to start donating, we could start taking them now. And I think David has more to say about that in his ward report about how we might do that. But it's a lot of flack to take just for people getting used to it.
Well, I mean, people knew it a year ago, but I guess maybe they just didn't pay attention.
I'm just bringing it up.
How much time in advance do we have to coordinate with permits?
I can be ready. We have to, to get the permit from the Coast Guard and from the, was it Bomb Squad? Three months. So we usually start in February, making sure that we get that permit. But it's pretty much the same every year now, it's that small part of the park. And it's very visible from the river and it's small, but it's, it's packed full of two-inch shelves that come, go off in packages and, you know, that's, short of getting a barge.
We need an organization or some person to come up and step up and take it. Because I, I know what's going to happen if the town tries to get the donations, where we'll get so much and people will say, "Well, you know, they'll do it." They have committed, they'll go ahead and do it. We need somebody or some organization that is, some of those people who are complaining all the time belong to. Do you want to do it?
Well, I think, I can't say anything without talking to my board first, but I think Main Street was certainly going to discuss whether Main Street would organize that. And then the co-chair of the Fall Car Show has just said, "If we make any money off of that, the car show could donate proceeds."
And David has one thing sure offered.
Well, you know, they do it in Rock Hall and they have quite a, it costs $20,000 for them. And they actually have money left over that they give to the fire department. But you've got to have somebody go out there and shake the trees because, and we can't really do that here. I mean, it's just people, people pay their taxes and they just don't feel like they need to pay us anymore, so.
Well, I've also, excuse me one second, had somebody else make mention. And so I will get back with them and see how serious they are and how involved they want to get.
David, I just think that we should explore all options on this and I was approached by quite a number of people in our ward who were disappointed. Yes, they should have known, but the fact that we had fireworks after we had already voted not to fund them anymore, obviously because they were already under contract, I think a lot of people just forgot about that. And so then they were, they were upset this time around. While I was wondering what on earth we could do about it, I was walking through the farmers market on Saturday and our own firehouse had a booth set up there and I asked them whether they would consider doing this. And they in turn asked me to write them a letter explaining kind of what was mine. I want to emphasize, they had no way committed to taking it on, but they actually invited me to come this evening. They're meeting, they meet unfortunately the same times that, that we do, first, every other, every other week on Monday. I said I couldn't come, but they asked me to send a letter to them, which I did, and then I got back word that they were going to read that at their meeting this evening and see. Obviously, we need to remember that the, our fire company really is desperate for volunteers and they have fundraising challenges of their own. If another organization could work with them to do some of the fundraising and the advertising, I think that could be a great combination. And obviously, the firehouse in, in Rock Hall has done a great job with that. So all I can say is that they are considering it. And I think they would obviously want to talk with the firehouse in Rock Hall and see how they handle it. And any other organization that might be interested, we'd like to explore that. But I was pleased that they were at least willing to, to discuss this on relatively short notice. And they, they really cannot dip into their own funds. They have as many challenges as we have. But if it was put in a separate account, that might be a possible, possibility.
I participated in an email thread from some people that are willing to set up an organization to do the fundraising for, for, so there are people out there that want, that want to contribute.
Great, that's great.
And make it happen. So working with the fire department might be a good way to make it happen.
While the iron is hot.
I was just thinking the same thing, you know?
Because you ask the same question in April, it's not the same thing.
No, it's not. So it's a good time.
I know the boating community was upset. They all like to get in their boat and go out there and watch.
Well, our marina?
My answer to several of them was, I said, "We've asked for donations in the past. How much money did you donate?" And you ought to see people who are, well, you're backing out and stuff.
People respond a little differently when they know it's not going to happen without donation than if, oh yeah, they're just adding to the pot.
Oh, I think it'd be great if somebody, some other organization hits it up. It's a different, the government doesn't do well raising funds.
Okay. One other thing, the little town that I was in on my vacation for 4th of July, they had business supporters and they had signs all along the road thanking each business who was a sponsor of the fireworks council avenue to be explored that a group could pull together.
Great.
Okay, I'll, I'll do my ward report. I don't have a mayor's report. I'd rather do my ward report. David, do you want to start or was that you?
Well, that's, that's part of it. Let's see. I also went on Friday night to the Lights for Liberty celebration, a program that was held at Memorial Park here and it really was a rather moving activity, good music and people expressing their concerns about the immigration issue with children in cages as they're describing. And it's, it's, makes one, one think, which was their intention. So I thought that was good. The other issue that I've had a number of people ask about is, is there room, is there thought about any facility for bike and kayak rentals at the marina?
We are, we definitely have discussed it and we want to get our feet wet without rentals right now. We, I have to say that if we have someone else do the rental, we have to pay taxes on the property. So we're keeping the commercial aspect of it because the...
Would be paying taxes to ourselves or pay taxes to the state of Maryland?
Okay. If there's income producing other than us for the marina, so. But Sam has a lot of good ideas and we're going to launch them, so to speak. Of course, we have two launch areas right now for kayaks and they're, they're not overwhelmed by them. And I don't think we're going to really get into the rental business until we think we can handle it. We, we're dredging right now, this is sort of... We, we're dredging right now, this is sort of, most people don't know this, and I'm sorry that we didn't have a chance to report this, but the state was not totally happy with the dredging that was done by the contractor two years ago, they did some infrareds, and they said, okay, we'll fund this, we want you to get these areas that aren't, you know, showing as deep enough. So that's what we're doing right now. It's just not really a safe place, I don't think, for kayakers, or, or those boards causes.
Stand-up paddle boards.
Stand-up paddle boards. And it wouldn't preclude someone else from doing it somewhere nearby, but we're doing well, but it's a busy, busy thing with our staff, our school staff. It's, I'm very hopeful that it'll have all those things, and everybody will know where they're supposed to be.
Okay.
We still have that issue where voters come up and they go, I'm going to the restaurant, and so it's free, and, and we all know that it isn't, because the restaurant doesn't know, and the marina, the, the restaurant has rented two slips, but they fill up awful fast at 5:00. So people just hop in their boat and say, I'm going to go get a drink at the 98 Cannon Street. But we're going to work out all those details.
If we get that kayak thing going, I have a suggestion for you, and that, the bridge that goes across a quicker net, put no motorized boats past this point. I was up there on a canoe one time, coming out with my two daughters, and two guys come barreling through there with those jet ski things, and I thought we were going to be...
This is Radcliffe Creek you're speaking of.
Yeah. Are you doing the bridge?
There's one more.
A little bridge, you just put it on there, not beyond this point. We don't need jet screws, jet...
Listen, we have a DNR official out here.
That was illegal anyway, PWC, a jet ski, like you're talking about, has to be 100 feet from the shore, so they could, they would have been a violation.
Chief, that's great, thanks.
Ward two?
What?
I'm sorry, ward four?
Well, I, I hit him with my paddle, so they...
That'll work.
I said...
That's it?
Yeah, well, they took him to the hospital, they expected him to live, but they didn't, so... Part of that story's not true, the last part, but the first part is true.
Well, is that your ward four report?
Pardon?
Is that your ward four report?
No, oh, you want my ward four report? Oh, it was such a short meeting, I've got quite a long report. Since I wasn't here for the last meeting, I wasn't able to report on the fact that I attended the conference down in Ocean City. I think Dave mentioned it, I saw it in the notes. I was happy and proud to carry our flag in the parade. I think it's important for us to do that, in that, that's the state officials who all show up in that first day, and the other towns that we do exist, that Chester Town is here, so... I went to a few sessions, I will say, after 12 years, they're getting a little redundant, some of them, the people who have been there, you've only been there a couple of years, and I was like, you're probably running into some redundancy. But I did attend one chief, that was ran on community relations, and they had four, four chiefs of police from rather big departments. The new female Baltimore County Police Chief was there. The point I took away from that meeting was, if you wait until you have a crisis to try and form your community relations, you're in trouble. You've got to start in the beginning and work with it all the time, and I'm sure the chief's aware of that and does it too. And then I attended, and so did Dave, because I saw him in the back there, session on medium-sized towns, I think we fall into that category. The two things I came from that is that we were the only town there, I think, that didn't get some aids from their county. Which, please make a note of that, we were the only town there that didn't get any aid from the county. And a number of them I asked about that have colleges, and a number of them do get some kind of compensation from the different, different colleges in their town. I know Frostburg gets, of course Frostburg is a little bit like us, most of the town is the college, I mean, it's a big, big town. And finally, I got some good and bad news from Bailey Park. The good news is that the town crew went through there and trimmed and pruned, there's over 100 trees planted in there, and it really, if you, if people haven't been there recently, go look at it, they always keep it mowed nicely, but with the trimming of the trees, it really is a jewel of a park, and more and more people are jogging on it and that type of thing, so it is, it is getting used. The bad news is that the playground equipment we had there, I think, I don't know whether you guys knew about it last time or not, but it's been vandalized, and I, I think there was some discussion of whether that's really the appropriate place for it to be, because it's underutilized. I'm there a lot, I'm there at least twice a day, and, of course, I'm there at odd hours, but, it, it does get used, but it doesn't get used that much, but from the location, it makes it vulnerable to just what happened, and that's, and it's vandalism, because at nighttime, parks are closed, and there's no houses, the houses nearby there have a great big seven-foot fence separating, they can't see what's going on, and they, they were pretty well, not the first time, but just the worst time that they've been vandalized. And so I think maybe we should think about that, I, I think there was some discussion, you know, emails about it, so... And that is, I wish I would have brought up the good news last, but it really is, if you guys get a chance to go look at Bailey Park, it's, in the, in the time that I've been on this council, went from a field that had ditches and rucks and wasn't mowed very often, and to something that's really, really nice, and take a look at it. Okay, that's, on to the hot bit, speaking of hot bit, they burned at some of that...
Yes, hot bit activity is quiet this time around. I do want to commend the residents for keeping the, I mean, it's really pretty coming to the third ward, the neighbors are looking good, people are keeping the grasses cut. I do want to have a shout out to the greescapes who continue to keep our circle looking well. So I'm kind of quiet this time around, and I want to use this time, though, to continue to remind residents that the opioid crisis is still a problem, and that people are still overdosing, and that it doesn't matter where, what part of town you're in, how much money you make, all of us are affected by this. So please, 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 get some help if you need it, and, and so we can get a handle on this problem in our town.
Mayor, I don't know, I don't know exactly why Jamie's here, but I attended a, I was invited to a summit the other day, would you mind coming up and telling the council about the Secretary Kelly being here?
Secretary of Commerce.
And what a great day it was, and really, you're responsible, aren't you?
Well, the Secretary of Commerce, there's a new Secretary of Commerce as of January this year, and when she was appointed to the office, she wanted to come around to different counties in Maryland and visiting.
That's what Megan Neener played in.
She came to Chester Town on Thursday, and we had, there, all the mayors were invited, county commissioners, business leaders, and there, a lot of state officials were there. And we basically talked about what was happening in Kent County and Chester Town, and shared like a lot of the projects, and where they could help us with some of the projects that we started on, but that we need, need continued support for. So I, I think it was a great meeting, I, she was, it was, it was nice to hear Mayor Morales talked about the emergency service providers, and the, I'm trying, trying to remember, oh, the, the hospital, healthcare, so the distance that they have to travel to take people to the hospital. So the hospital was talked about a lot, so maintaining the hospital presence in Kent County was discussed, and then the other big issue was education, the quality of our public education system, and how did we maintain that with the planning involvement, and things of that nature, so...
It really was impressive, the people that were there, Gillespie, all, all the big companies that are, that have kept us economically viable for so long, Bramble, they're all represented, and we're in the new warehouse of Dixon Valley, which you all have a little, and you have some, you know, a piece, a part of that is in your ward, fantastic building, the spirit was up, and I think one of the most interesting things that the college president said is they have sold off a, a good number of properties that they meant to sell off, and they will go back on the tax rolls, about $12 million worth of value back on the tax rolls. So that, that was good, and, and, but the, the building going up next to it, and Dick Goodall talked about the campus in general, what they have next, what was the third building? Is going to be built, the athletic?
Before the end of the year, the Kent Athletic Center, they'll work around the Kent Athletic Center as well as the manufacturing facility, and that will be the fourth building to complete Dixon's needs. And then after that, we progress on to other speculative space to attract other businesses to that campus.
And they're going to have an open house coming up, the public guy, I didn't go through the tour, they took the Secretary Kelly through a tour with state people, and they got a chance to see what their funding, their enterprise zones and stuff could do.
Well, Dixon's putting another building up there, too, I think.
Because you know you have to go up there to, to feel the immenseness of it, and I know, it's great from the roof. Anyway, it's, it's really good, and maybe the fruits of your labors are, are being born. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Your honor, seeing Jamie reminds me, I also did attend a meeting of the Economic Development Commission last week, and also use that as an opportunity to address the issue that Marty had raised also, in terms of ask them, reminded them that we are all looking for some individual who can assist with an audit, and this goes back to the point that Commissioner Fithian had agreed to work with us, to do an audit, looking at, basically determine the, the size and nature of a, of a tax set off that would be fair to us and to the county. And I'm not going to get my hopes up, but so far, so good.
It was very well presented, David.
Well, thank you.
They're always willing to talk to us, that's about as far as I've ever got at it.
Right. Thank you, Jamie. So we're, we're cautiously optimistic, and I think we do really need to take that next step to identify someone, Bill has some suggestions, I've been talking with people at the University of Maryland, someone also on our behalf is approaching Chesapeake College, but to get someone who knows something about local government, knows, understands public finance, and most importantly, is trusted by both the members of the town council and the commission, and so if anybody has any suggestions along those lines, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Jamie, for coming. Okay, I'm going to do ward two, and Sabine was planning to be here tonight, she's been away, and she sent me a text that she wasn't going to get back in time. She has started a GoFundMe page, a campaign for the farmer's market, and this is for matching the Maryland market money, which is matching money. So if you donated $25 on the GoFundMe page, that would actually provide $50 worth of Maryland market money for low-income families. So it was funny, she said, I'm so sorry to be so shameless, but the grant money was quickly going, and so she started, and she said, in just two short weeks, residents had redeemed $200 worth of benefits, and she had also given out $200 in matching funds, so that's a really good way to get people who probably think they can't afford to come to the market, to come to the market, see all the fresh produce that is available, and the baked goods, and the, the market's full. I mean, there's no doubt about it, it's just, it's full, and it's wonderful, and the diversity down there with all of the vendors is really, really good. We have Legacy Days coming up in August, I can't remember the date of Legacy Day.
Let's say 17.
But the, um, excuse me, the flyers are in the Historical Society. Is it the 14th?
I think, I'm checking, I think it's the 17th.
17, okay. So that's Legacy Day coming up, and it'll be hot.
Yeah, 17.
We have, I meant to ask you, when you were talking about the stage, how, how are we coming?
Oh, well, so we got a $35,000 grant from the Schuman Foundation, that was to be a match for the Maryland Heritage Area Authority Grant. We are, we can't talk about it yet because we're on the reserve list, we've been approved for a grant if the funding authorization in September comes through. So I can't, it's not a done deal.
That's fine.
As David would say, we're cautiously optimistic that it'll be totally funded this fall, but I can't, I can't say anything public, and I can't go to the bank.
Not my ward, but Kent County 4-H Fair starts Wednesday, and...
Thursday.
I'm sorry, you're right. Thursday is crab cakes and free ice cream.
All right.
And I got my days mixed up. And then Friday night is the barbecue, and Saturday night is the chicken. So as normal, it'll be hot, 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 but anyway, it's always a good time at the 4-H Fair. And then I am so happy to report, and I said this at the last meeting, that, not my ward again, but it's the county, Kent County Humane Society, the 2020 Kent County Humane Society Calendar Contest, there ended up, I, I'm pretty sure there were 59 contestants for the 12 slots, and it was like a roller coaster. I went from 22 to two, and then I dropped to six. I ended up in third place, Sarah and I ended up in third place, and they received around $31,000 in donations. This, it just blew me away, it is absolutely phenomenal, and thank you to anybody, you know, who donated, anybody and everybody who donated, and when I dropped to sixth place on Friday, in about an hour, I was calling people, texting people, you know? Get back up there, but anyway, this was so much fun, and it just shows you what a wonderful, generous, you know, community that we live in, the county, and so then when the calendar comes out, they'll have the calendar for sale.
Is that Petmates?
Huh?
Are they called Petmates? Never mind.
Anyway...
Petmates? I mean, go on.
So I, I just, to me, it just blew me away when I, when I saw the final figure. So, that's all I have. Anybody else in the audience?
James, maybe, I think.
James?
No, he's not real, he's no real friend.
So, do I call the...
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.